Special meeting of the Fairfield City Council to order, please. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Panduro.
Here.
Councilmember Santu.
Here.
Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Councilmember Williams, I believe she's still coming. Vice Mayor Bertoni is absent, and Mayor Moy.
Here. And let's see here, how about, how about Councilwoman? Could you just lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk, public comments, please.
Yes. Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, if you're online, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press star nine on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item, and if anyone else would like to speak, the cards are up here. I think there's some in the back, too. And our first speaker is Jeff LaLea.
Hi.
Hello. Honorable Mayor Moy, honored City Council members, thank you for hearing me speak this evening. My name is Jeff LaLea, and I am the Victim Witness Program Director for the Solano County District Attorney's Office. I am here to speak on behalf of Lilia Bro, DV Program Manager for the Fairfield Police Department. When I heard that Lilia's job might be cut due to budget issues, I instantly thought about the profound impact Lilia has had on the community of Fairfield. I met Lilia first as colleagues in 2008 when I was hired as an, when she was hired as an advocate. The first thing that's evident about Lilia is that she has a passion for those who have been traumatized by violence. While she is deeply compassionate and empathetic, Lilia is also tough. Victim advocacy is not for the faint of heart. Dealing with grief on a daily basis is a daunting task that affects every part of an advocate's life, but Lilia thrives in this work. Lilia left the DA's office to be the DV Manager for the Fairfield Police Department in 2016. Even though we would work in partnership from that point forward, I still believe that the Solano County DA's office lost a big asset in Lilia. Since being with the Fairfield Police, since being the Fairfield DV Manager for the Fairfield Police Department, we have worked in partnership with Lilia, and she has been an invaluable voice for the victims of Fairfield. The criminal justice system is hard to navigate, and Lilia's advocacy has been a balm of healing for victims and a place of refuge in their most difficult times of life. The thousands of victims that have worked with Lilia will tell you how much of an impact they have, that she has had on their lives. I know that one of her victims was so inspired by Lilia's advocacy that she followed in her footsteps and is now an advocate herself. Lilia is the heart of the Fairfield Police Department when it comes to victims. You would think of that in the last 17 years that there would be some burnout being the sole victim advocate for a whole police department, but Lilia's passion just continues to grow. She is always fighting for victims' voices to be heard. I know that it may be easy to look at numbers and see Lilia's program as a dollar amount, but the detriment that cutting Lilia's position would have on the city of Fairfield would be vast. Victim advocacy is the part of the village that tells people it will be okay and guides them through the trauma to the other side. There are a lot of advocates who are here to-
Twenty seconds.
There are a lot of advocates who are here to stand for Lilia, not just because she is one of us, but because she is the best of us, and she has individually inspired and made us all better advocates in our own rights. I would implore you to consider what I have said and not cut the DV Manager position for the Fairfield Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, Molly Martinez, to be followed by Melissa Nixon.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Molly Martinez. I'm a victim advocate at Travis Air Force Base. I've known Lilia since about 2012. I've known her in several positions. I just wanted to say a few things that Lilia is amazing. I have never, not one time, has she ever ignored me, not even for more than an hour when I know she's horribly busy. When I have victims, when I need help, she's always there for them. You know, I work in a very hard career field as well with victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. Lilia is just, I can't even say enough, she's amazing. Every time we've done base events, not only has Lilia come, she's drug, part of Fairfield Police Department with her, fingerprints for the kids when we've had a fun fest. She's just gone above and beyond, and I just, I don't even have enough words for what a wonderful human being she is, and cutting her position would just be a detriment to this whole community.
Thank you so much.
Next is Melissa Nixon, to be followed by Rosa Portillo.
Hello. Good afternoon, members of the City Council. Lilia is truly my sister in this work. That's what I call her. I too am a victim advocate, and I'd like to take a moment to highlight the profound importance of her work and the irreplaceable role that she has in our community here in Fairfield. I met Lilia in 2018 while we were working together as domestic violence advocates. Since then, we have worked side by side on countless cases, including those where victims were tragically have lost their life at the hands of their abuser. Through it all, she has remained a tireless advocate, showing up for victims, ensuring they receive all the resources that they need, fighting for their safety and their justice. But Lilia's impact goes far beyond just responding. As someone else said, she responds to me within an hour, and I do the same for her, no matter what time of day it is. She goes above and beyond for the victims, offering her unwavering support through every step of their journey, not just the beginning. Whether it's standing beside them in court, helping them navigate a complex legal system, finding emergency housing, connecting them with therapy, or simply just listening, listening with compassion and holding their hand in their darkest moment, Lilia is there. She truly is a value to law enforcement and to our community. She's walked with survivors, offering them not just justice, but services of hope and dignity and assurance that they are not alone. Her dedication is not just a job, it's a lifeline for survivors and their families. The loss of her position due to the budget cuts is not just a loss of the role, it truly is a critical loss of support for some of the most vulnerable community members. Her impact cannot be measured in numbers alone. It is seen, I have seen personally the lives that she has touched and the victims that she has protected, and the justice that has been pursued on their behalf. Her presence in our community is invaluable, and her absence will leave a void that cannot be filled. I urge the council to recognize the significance of this decision, considering the devastating consequences it may not only have on those who rely on her advocacy. Protecting those victims of violence, of crime, is not optional to me, it's just a responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Rosa Portillo, to be followed by Corinda Stenett.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Rosa Portillo, and I am advocate at Solano Advocates for Victims for Violence, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of Lilia and her domestic violence program, a valued component of the Fairfield Police Department. I understand the difficult decisions you are facing in light of the current budget constraints, but I urge you to reconsider terminating this essential program. SAVE has worked with Lilia for years, and she has constantly gone above and beyond in assisting victims directly and by connecting them to agencies like SAVE and our fellow agencies who are also here today to support Lilia. She brings a unique skill set that is invaluable to us as an organization and to service, and to the services we provide to the community. Victims have shared with us that Lilia's empathy from the moment they meet her reassures them that they will have the support they need, and, and for this, they are very grateful, which is why some are also present today. Lilia has shown time and time again that this program is an essential part of the Fairfield Police Department when dealing with victims of crime. Without Lilia and the domestic violence program, there would be serious repercussions. Not only would the police department lose her skills and dedication, but it would also greatly affect the services provided to victims who are now connected to our agencies directly by her. Furthermore, the collaboration with Fairfield Police Department and local victim service agencies would have a significant disruption and possible dismantle. Lilia and her program have worked together with SAVE on annual outreach events such as our Shine the Light for Domestic Violence event, Sexual Assault Awareness Denim Day, and International Women Day. We feel that victims are more open to collaborate with law enforcement when they see the involvement of domestic violence program and Lilia with community-based organizations. In conclusion, I urge you to take into consideration for the long-term impact of losing this program and Lilia, not only to victims, but the community we serve. Lilia is an integral part of our success, and I ask you to explore all possible alternatives before making such a drastic decision. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Next is Corinda Stenett, to be followed by Latrice Mutchison.
Good evening, Mayor Moy and council members. My name is Corinda Stenett. I am the Program Director currently with SAVE Quest Solano. I've worked alongside Lilia for 10-plus years now. So I stand before you tonight just not as an advocate, but as someone who has seen firsthand the lifesaving impact of the Domestic Violence Program Manager position within the Fairfield Police Department. In discussions about budget reduction, this role has been placed on the chopping block. I am here to urge you, this should not even be an option. This is not about convenience, not, it's about crisis intervention. Domestic violence is not just another community issue, it is a matter of life and death. It is about the woman who was being held, sorry, was being held against her will to prevent her from securing a restraining order. A single call to Fairfield PD's DV Advocate, Lilia, set the motion in place to rescue her, and despite a possible concussion, she stood in court that day and won her protection. It's about the children removed from violent homes with nothing but the clothes on their back, only to be met by someone who drove out of their way to ensure they had food, clothing, and a sense of security. These are not isolated incidents. This position has touched many lives over the years. The domestic violence program is not an administrative role, it is a frontline response. It bridges the gap between law enforcement and victim services, ensuring survivors don't just become another statistic, but instead receive immediate specialized intervention when they need it the most. Eliminating this role doesn't just weaken our response to domestic violence, it signals to victims that their safety is negotiable. It tells them that when they call for help, that call may not be answered with the same urgency or expertise. That is not the message we want to send Fairfield survivors. I understand that budgets require hard choices, but I ask, what is the cost of a life? Because that is what we are discussing tonight. Some cuts may cause inconvenience, but this one would cause, replace, or, sorry, nervous, would cause harm. This role must be preserved. The people of Fairfield deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Latrice?
Good evening. My name is Latrice Mutchison. I am a licensed clinical social worker at Travis Air Force Base, and I've known Lilia for over 10 years, I'll say. I worked at Family Advocacy where we deal with domestic violence and child abuse as well, and she has been a godsend to our program. When we have victims that don't want to receive military services, we always have a person that we can contact here in Fairfield to send those victims to. She's always been very supportive of me and the role that I had at Travis with outreach. Anytime we had any type of domestic violence event, she was there with her team, running in our 5Ks or setting up an information table for our victims, because we like to collaborate with the community so that they can know what resources are available to them as well. So her, her position is very detrimental to the community as well. She was very instrumental personally to a family member of mine that experienced some severe violence in their family, and she was there when I called her to be there, a support for that family member as well. So losing that position would not only hurt us at Travis as well, but it also, you know, hurt this community too. So I just plead to you that you keep that in mind and take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anyone else wish to speak? There are no hands raised online.
Alrighty, then we will go to presentations.
Presentation, Biennial Budget Discussion, presented by Director of Finance, John Furtado.
And Madam Mayor, I'm going to kick this off real quick and introduce this. So as, as the council will remember, back in January at your council retreat, annual goal-setting retreat, we gave a presentation on the city's financial position. We've been talking about this now for a couple of years, and at that time, the City Council asked us to come back at this study session and show the council what further austerity might look like, and so that's what we are doing here, austerity meaning cuts, in order to try and balance the budget. So what, the way the flow will work tonight is, John's going to do the introductory detail components, and over the last couple of years, as you know and will see, you've already made quite a bit of adjustment to the financial, the expenditure plan for the city in an effort to bring down the structural deficit that we had projected. You will see also that we are at a point where there is, there is little to no fat left in the organization, and any further cuts will have impacts on services to the community. So as we go through this presentation, after John does his component, then each of the departments, and we've presented this by size of departmental budget, so it starts at the smallest department and then works its way towards the largest department, and each of them are going to go over what they have identified as a way in order to cut 5%. That was my direction to them, similar to last year as we went through the mid-cycle budget update. The challenge to them was identify 5%, and that's what they've done. But I want to be clear at the outset that, you know, as I mentioned, you know, we are at a point where this is, this is service cuts in, in ways that will have impact on the community. So we'll walk through each of those, and then happy to have a conversation at the end. John?
Evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public and staff. Good to see everyone here. As David said, I'm going to go through the presentation split into four parts, basically looking at some trends, and then we'll get into the meat of what council asked us to do, which is what austerity looks like.
Excuse me, John. So colleagues, if you have questions as we are going along, if you could just let me know by putting your hand up, and then I'll call on you and can ask a question right then. Okay? Thank you. I'll keep an eye out, if not, you will, huh? Okay. All right. Yeah, young eyes. Thank you. Thank you, John.
So to start with, you know, just the definition of what a structural deficit is, I'm not going to read that, but basically when things are normal, everything is, is in normal operations. When your expenses exceed your revenues, that's when you have a structural deficit, and that continues time over time. Two years ago, we identified a 20 million gap in the long term, which I'll get into. So looking at trends, it's really important as we develop this budget to look at the past and then into the future. So on the revenue side, 28% almost of our general fund budget comes from property taxes. We've seen wild swings there, as you see. That's because of the way the county implemented a new system. It wasn't, there were parcels that were assessed at zero value, that's why in 2022 our revenue dropped. But in reality, we've seen a four, four and a half to 5% growth in property taxes, and I won't get into too much detail, but that's how we are projecting that to go ahead. In 2025, there's a big jump there, 7.8%. Part of that is because some of the redevelopment agency properties are bringing in more revenue, and this county took a stand on some of the housing properties that were fully exempt to be taxed, because as, as low-cost housing came in or low, low-income housing came in, they would get those exemptions. So that added almost half a million to the role, but that will go away over time as they get fully occupied. Looking at sales tax, we saw the bumper years in '21 and '22 during COVID. When you say 13% and 15%, it may seem a lot, but we saw 7% to 8% inflation during those years. So inflation also adds up, so it's, in reality, it's maybe 6% or 7%. In 2023, we saw moderation. 2024, we saw a first drop in sales tax, a lot lesser than other cities in the Bay Area. We are still projecting, based on our consultant's feedback, a drop next year, and then probably very small growths in '26 and '27, which is the budget we are preparing for. Measure P has taken an even larger hit, as you see there, I won't get into too many details on that. UUT and franchise tax, which is also closer to 10% of our budget, has seen a lot of growth, again with PG&E raising their rates and all of those, you know, we have a percentage on top of that, so that's why those numbers have been a lot higher than you would expect. So that's why those numbers have been a lot higher than you would expect. Looking at the expense trends, a lot of what we spend is people. On the salary side, we had the, we added around 36 positions in the '22, '23, '21, '22 time period. Those made our payroll expenses go up by almost 7.6% and 8.9%. In 2024, we froze around 14.5 positions, and we had a larger savings on vacancies. So we had a lot of vacant positions. So that's why you just see that 1.7 growth. And then in 2025 was when the big colas for staff kicked in. And because we had a larger vacancy savings in '24, that percentage looks a lot higher. On the benefits side, we've seen our CalPERS costs go through the roof. It's, and I'll be getting into detailed slides on that. Medical costs have also gone up. In terms of overtime, in 2021, we had the LMU fires. So that's when we went 40% higher than the previous year. Then we started moderating in '22 and '23. We still have a lot of people on injury on duty and stuff like that. So they have to be backfilled by overtime. So those caused a jump in '23 and '24. Now in '25, we are showing a 25% reduction. That again, part of that is to be credited to the police chief for changing the schedules to 410s. That's bringing in a lot of savings. And we haven't baked in any more injuries for fire. If those persist, then that percentage would drop. On the ISFs, we, in 2021, we started funding some of those ISFs that were not internal service funds, for those who want to know what an ISF is. We started funding them in 2021 and 2022. And then in 2023, we had this big jump where we funded 2.5 million to the VRF. Prior to this, we were not funding the workers' comp by 2.5 million, which is a regular expense, which we started doing in 2023 and '24. So that's on the ISF side.
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Manvier is supposed to help you, and he thinks I'm waving at him.
What did the city manager say? That's because, you know, I mean, that's how it is with him, yeah. It's all good.
So on the last slide, surrounding overtime, there's a 25% reduction since last year. But where are we in overtime in general? Are we, do we still have overtime? Or has that been wiped out?
So in the current year, that's 2025, you're talking about why is there a reduction?
No. So I understand that there's a reduction from 2024, if I heard you right? There's, I think what I understood was there is a 25% reduction from 2024 in 2025.
Correct.
So my question is, what is our overtime numbers in 2025?
In 2020, so in 2024, it was around 8.5 to 9 million in that range. We're anticipating it to be in the 6 million range if everything goes well in '25.
If everything goes well means what?
So we have a big variable for us with overtime is how many officers or firefighters get injured. So we have the exact number of staff required to fill every shift. So if an officer is injured or a firefighter is injured, he has to be backfilled by overtime. And that's something we can never predict till later in the year.
And what is the city's budget for overtime?
Ashley, do you have that number? Yeah, we'll look it up. I believe it's in the 7 to 8 million range, and we've been consistently going over that.
But right now, for 2025, your estimated, you think, your projection is that we will be at 6 million in overtime for 2025?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
At least that's what we have baked into the budget when we developed it. Yeah. Yeah, we have.
Councilwoman for now. Could you explain what internal service funds are?
So an internal service fund, so we have needs within the city, right? So a very good example would be our police cars or our radios. We need to buy radios and then we need to replace them. We need to buy cars and then replace them. So if we buy a car that costs $50,000 and we have to replace it in 10 years, we don't wait for the 10th year to find $50,000. What we will do is we will put aside $10,000 every year into an internal service fund. So it's like a separate bucket where we put this money. So 10 years later, we have the $50,000 ready to go out and buy that car. And the issues we have been seeing with the internal service funds is we would project a 2% or 3% increase in the cost of some of the replacements. But, you know, a car that was costing, you expected to replace at $10,000 is now maybe $14,000 or $15,000. So that's throwing us out of whack as well.
And so that's why we see the variations in this, all of the funds. How many do we have?
We have a significant number. We have around 20, 20 or so internal service funds.
Okay, and how is that money moved around? Who has the authority to do it?
Council will approve that in the budget.
Right.
Yeah, it's all in the budget.
So this is not something that you move around or David? At no level, you don't move it around?
No, no, staff does not have authority to move between any fund, let alone an ISF fund. The city manager has the authority to move within the fund, but not into other funds. That is only council.
Right, okay, thank you.
And real quick, the general fund overtime budget for this current fiscal year '25 is 6.3 million.
Yeah, that's alright. Any other questions?
Yes, one other question. So the 6.3 million in overtime, the budget, that was taking into account the fact that the police department went to 4 by 10s?
Correct.
And you have seen where that is, that has worked in making our numbers go down?
Correct, correct. That is real tangible, a tangible number.
And part of this presentation, is it going to include, because I went a few slides in, but I didn't want to go too far. I wanted to be present in the moment with you here. Is part of recommendations in how to reduce that overtime further?
Correct.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, so besides just looking at the general fund deficit, I just wanted to be, to highlight to council that we also have around 272 in recognized unfunded liabilities that you can see on the act for or our financial statements. Our net pension liability is almost 250 million. General liability, where for the claims that are in the pipeline, is 6.5 million. The leave vacation banks of staff is around 15 million there. And workers' comp is around 2 million. Besides those, we also have vehicle replacement. We've historically not funded our vehicle replacement fund at the levels we should. And we've also had cost escalations. A truck that would cost 300,000 is now 500,000. You saw last council meeting, you approved an increase in one of those truck purchases. So that all leads to vehicles being underfunded. To maintain our index, our current PCI index, and our roads at the level they are, we need 14.5 million every year in funding that we do not have. So, and then to increase the PCI compliance, we are already at a lower level. We would need in the excess of 250 million. We've got a lot of aging infrastructure, so our CIP is not fully funded. We've got electrification mandates that could come. So there's another half a billion or so of needs that are there in the future.
I have a quick question on the electrification. So the 84 million, that's just a need that's unfunded?
Correct.
We don't have 84 million over there, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, alright, thank you. Yes?
I had a question about electrification as well. Originally, was part of the electrification, were we looking to tap into infrastructure, federal dollars for that at one time?
Yeah, we do have some money set aside, but that's over and beyond what's here. This was a report prepared by WILDan on the total needs of electrification. And then we would go after grants. For a lot of this, we were trying to go after grants. So we will be also going after grants that are available. It's uncertain with the current environment whether we will be successful, but it is a desire, yes.
But, so this 84 million is here, but we're not going to try to do this work without knowing we have dollars to cover it, right?
I believe so. You want to take that, David?
Yeah. If the state's mandates, as currently constructed, right, there was a pullback on the electrification mandates for clean fleet that doesn't impact private sector. They still apply to local government. So if those mandates stick, this would be the cost of upgrading vehicles for electrification purposes as well as all of the electrical infrastructure needed, like at our corp yard, for example, at the prune yard for, you know, public safety vehicles. So it's been a long time since I've looked at that WILDan report, but what it basically did was it outlined, in order for us to fully transition in compliance with the clean fleet standards requirements by the state over the next 10, 15 years, this is the estimated cost of doing so. Of course, we would go for grants, any opportunity that we have. We have successfully received some of those funds already through the Transportation Commission. But we're just highlighting for you that as of right now, we do not sufficiently have money in order to go to the full electrification, which as of today, I can't, you know, there's a lot of conversation going on whether or not these regulations change here in the next few years because we're not the only agency that's facing this challenge. For one, the technology is not there. For two, PG&E questionably doesn't even have the power to supply it. And none of the local jurisdictions have the funding in order to fully implement the law as it's stated today.
Got it. And then under pavement maintenance, I remember a presentation we received a few years ago that gave, I guess, grading on pavement, for lack of a better word. So are we saying and looking at this unfunded needs that with 145 million, we're seeing a lot of roads in disrepair and with no pathway to catch up, to keep up with maintenance needs?
Yes, we're saying that over the next 10 years, it would take $145 million, is our estimate, to maintain the PCI rating we have today.
Got it. And then my final question is about vehicle replacement. I remember also a presentation where there was almost a, in my mind, a pushback to how quickly we replace vehicles. In my mind, it was, you know, maintaining, like, I have, I have a car. The more maintenance, the more I take care of it, the longer it lasts. At some point, it might be a little bit of a bucket, but it still rolls, so we're going to keep with it. Is that, is that our premise? And what we need to do with this 17.2 million dollars? We just need to keep maintaining what we have and not replacing as quickly? Yes?
Ultimately, that would become a policy decision of the city council. It's not our recommendation because the longer your fleet ages, the further behind you fall. In fact, I just saw a news article the other day talking about City of San Francisco. And they're at critically low levels because their fleet has aged so far. Their police department sometimes is worried that they don't even have vehicles to respond to calls for service. So yes, we could do everything we can to maintain vehicles as long as possible within our vehicle replacement fund, our VRF. Our fleet manager, David Rentschler and his team, they've done a good job. We have already pushed out life cycles on a lot of our vehicles, you know, from 10 to 12 years or 10 to 15-year life cycles. We have, we are currently going through that process now of looking at every vehicle we have, particularly on like the heavy equipment side, to see, okay, can we stretch something that maybe should have a 10-year recommended replacement cycle? Can we push that to 15 or 20 years? And then adjusting our VRF Internal Service Fund accordingly. So that is something that for the past year and a half, we've already been doing. We're in that process. But at some point, vehicles do need replacement. Otherwise, you will get to a point where you have too big a hole and you're not able to replace vehicles. You almost get caught in a cycle.
Councilman Doug?
Actually, David did go into my question and answer. I was curious about the pushback on the vehicles. But thanks. I do have one other question. When we have the mandates, the pushback on the time limit, the time restraints, I think it's 2035 to be, like, that has been pushed back. At the same time, when they do put a hold on the mandates, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have a hold on able to get grants and funding for those, does it?
No, it doesn't. So you're talking about electrification? So our fleet manager has done a great job, and he has come up with a strategy where we've replaced some of our Lightning, with Lightning trucks. We're replacing some of our fleet with those that's going to extend the time we need to comply by almost eight years or something in that range. If he's here, he could confirm. But we don't have to address that today. That's not a today problem. And that's great, yeah.
Any other questions on this? Sanjay? No? Okay.
I think he was going to take that question.
Okay. I do have just one follow-up on electrification. So how much money do we have for electrification right now?
I believe it's around 17 million for the Phase 1 that is either received in grants or we have mandate to get a grant. So in that range is what I understand. Is it?
It's 12 million.
Oh, sorry, it's 12 million.
It's 12 million. And where did that money come from?
That's a federal FDA grant.
One grant?
Yes, one grant.
No general fund money?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just to clarify, no general fund money in that we're not making direct payments out of the general fund. As John mentioned, what our fleet manager has devised is in order to comply in the near term with the regulations, it all comes down to the weight of the vehicle for it to meet certain classifications. So we are building into the next budget the replacement of F-150 light-duty trucks with Ford Lightning trucks with the extended range, very specifically with the extended range. The reason for that is because the weight of an F-150 Lightning extended range exceeds the weight category limit. So by buying F-150 extended range Lightnings, we're actually complying with the clean fleet regulation that pushes off our necessity to buy heavy-duty vehicles that are electrification. And, you know, from a Ford F-150 of, call it $50,000 to an F-150 Lightning in extended range, you're going from $50,000 to $70,000 for that vehicle. That pales in comparison from going, you know, on a $150,000 more specialty vehicle that as an electrified vehicle may be a $250,000 vehicle. So it's, we're balancing sort of a cash management scenario in order to comply with the regulations, but buy ourselves as much time as possible on the heavier-duty specialty vehicles that are much higher costs in terms of electrification than their internal combustion alternative.
Okay, so again, you, there was a little hiccup there when we were talking about general fund. You said they don't directly pay. So does, what I'm looking for is I'm looking for every stinking penny in that general fund. And so I want to know where it's going and when.
So departments pay into the vehicle replacement fund? So departments pay into the vehicle replacement fund from their general fund budget?
Yes.
So the general fund is not going directly to purchase a vehicle. The value, as John described, is we amortize the cost of those vehicles out and analyze how much each department needs to set aside for their vehicle replacements. That then is a budget line item in the general fund that goes into the vehicle replacement fund, and then we purchase the vehicles from the VRF.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, and on the same way, when, uh, the utility buys their vehicles, they fund their own vehicles, so it's, there's no co-mingling. So the Internal Service Fund serves all the internal funds.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Any more questions on this slide? Okay. So he, this is like, just a few of the expense side of items, uh, to see the trends that we've been seeing. So CalPERS has been consistently either underperforming or reducing the discount rate from eight percent down to six-point-eight percent today. Uh, in twenty eighteen, we were paying eight million as our, uh, annual payment, and by twenty twenty-seven, that's gonna jump three times to twenty-five million. And it's roughly around twenty million today that we pay from the general fund every year. General liability, as you know, in closed session, uh, the number of cases that we've been settling, uh, and the premiums itself, the premiums have jumped, in blue, you will see the premiums there, they've jumped from little under half a million in twenty twenty to three-point-one, that's six times the price. That's just the premiums. And then we have the claim history, which has been pretty wild in twenty twenty-two, when we had the, uh, the Claybank floods and stuff like that. I- in twenty twenty-four, we had a few employee cases that were settled, so, uh, a lot of money is going towards funding these general liabilities. Workers' comp, another area where we've seen a lot of our officers and firefighters get injured, other staff get injured, uh, and it's just a lot of cost. The premiums have not gone up as much, but the cost of paying out these claims and then projecting these claims into the future is, is, has really increased. Uh, in context, last year, we were overfunded in our workers' comp fund. Uh, this year, we are at eighty percent, so we've dropped below the full funding level. Uh, looking at our preliminary forecast, these are very early numbers, uh, and-
Hold on there. City manager's doing a fine job with this. Councilwoman Patrice?
Thank you. So, um, uh, let me take workers' compensation first. Um, you know, I know, just because I sit in closed session, you know, with everyone, that, you know, we, we have, um, uh, uh, we're implementing some best practices. Um, I'm trying to think of, uh, an example of one, um, uh, I can't. Um, so let me just go to the question. Um, in best practices, what more can we do, looking at other cities, um, that's doing, implementing something that helps us stay healthier? Or, I mean, is just there, is there anything that we can do to bring down this workers' comp, um, based on best practices of other cities?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. Um, yes, a couple of things on, on workers' comp. In the recent past, we've had some serious injuries, uh, long-term, um, in some cases, devastating injuries to our employees, um, and so that does put a lot of pressure, upward pressure, uh, on, um, the, the fund and, and, um, our long-term, uh, liability in that case. But we have, um, actually recently hired a new TPA that has a really good reputation in, in the, um, in the industry for bringing people back, for making sure that employees are getting the care they need as soon as they need, so that they can recover faster. But, um, in the last couple of years, we've had such, a couple of big, uh, workers' comp claims that have really affected this, uh, fund.
Thank you. And then, the same with general liability. Is there anything that we can do differently to, um, see a downward trend in general liability? And again, this is just in comparison with other cities, best practices that are happening, just anything that we could do to, uh, to get this kinda, this number going down?
I think, uh, uh, on the general liability side, if you see, a, a risk management team is excellent, right? They, they, they really do a great job at, at mitigating, uh, risk and, and, you know, denying some of the bogus claims that we receive, so it is not the claims that's driving it, it's the premium. So, a, a, a very good example would be, uh, and these costs were done last week, right? The twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-five could be a lot higher than this. Take, for example, Davis, right? There was a huge settlement for the city of Davis. We are in the same pool. A, a twenty-five million dollar settlement that went out. We are safe, we have done nothing wrong, but we get hit because we are in this pool with other cities. So every claim that comes from a pool member increases our liability, and then even if it's not a pool member, the reinsurance of the whole thing, it's like there's no free lunch, somebody has to pay for it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so looking at our preliminary forecast, these are early numbers without using any one-time money. If we were to continue as it is, uh, we did a great job in terms of reducing our twenty million deficit to a ten million ongoing deficit. Uh, with the current deficit that we have, business as usual, uh, we will run out of money in twenty thirty. So looking at the longer-term forecast now, uh, the gap, as you see, the structural deficit show, clearly shows those lines not meeting. Uh, it has been, it has been consistent, so that's that ten million, and then in twenty thirty-three, halfway through, we lose measure P, and then we go down to a thirty-seven or thirty-eight million shortfall in the general fund at that point of time. So i- in our prior budget, uh, meetings that we had with council, council advised us or directed us to do the hybrid approach. So with the hybrid approach, we did, we did use one-time balancing strategies. Uh, we identified twenty-eight million dollars that was available outside of the general fund. So those were some of the ARPA monies and some of the monies we had set aside. Uh, we decide, council directed us to use those to balance the budget, and at the same time, focus on revenues and expense reductions. So that's, doing all of that, uh, we went through this exercise, so we started two, more than two years ago. So two years ago, when we started preparing our budget, the departments had already seen six to eight percent inflation, so there were costs that were already inflated that they needed to pay for. So we saw a three-point-two percent, uh, two million increase in just our operating costs. Uh, we asked departments to hold the line. Uh, what they did was, a lot of the departments froze positions so that they could then use that money to fund, for example, Exxon, PD froze a bunch of positions so they could pay for Exxon Mobil. And then, when we did this, the next step was the city manager asked us to go through this exercise of reducing five percent, and we brought this, uh, to you last year, where every department came up with what five percent will look like. Uh, council, when you looked at these numbers, uh, there were some cuts in police that, officers that you did not agree to. So instead of achieving a five percent or seven-point-two million target, we achieved four-point-two. So three-point-seven-seven is what we achieved. The cuts, along with the absorbing of other costs and increase in revenues, has so far helped us cut that twenty million deficit to a ten million deficit, so we are fifty percent there. And then, if, th- this is just a list of some of the-
Do you have a question?
Just to clarify, could you go back one slide? Uh, yeah, so is that three-point-seven-seven percent cut equivalent to ten million?
No, that was equivalent to five-point-four-two million.
Is that how much we cut from the twenty?
That, that's how much we cut from the twenty. Then we had a bump in revenues that we went after, and we had other cuts in expenditure that's outside of this.
And to click, so are you showing the, this, this previous or this is the new one?
This is previous. This is already done.
Okay.
Yeah, so we started on this exercise more than two years ago. We identified a structural deficit, we started addressing it at that point, and we brought it down from twenty million to ten million, through everything that we did over the last one and a half year.
So the last one went from a twenty million deficit to fifteen million?
To a twenty million.
It went to twenty million?
From a twenty to a ten million, sorry.
Got it.
Yeah. We cut it in half.
Thank you.
Yeah, th- this just represents, in the current fiscal year adopted budget, there was five-point-four million in cuts that were made to the expenditures from the prior year.
And then, just the number of positions that we've frozen so far. In twenty twenty-four, we froze around thirteen positions. In the twenty-five budget, we have got around another eleven and a half positions, so almost twenty-five positions frozen so far before we get into the austerity side of it. And I think, David, you're gonna take it from here?
Yeah, so, um, so, you know, again, um, you can keep advancing, John. So at the council retreat, council talked about, you know, us coming and showing you what further cuts would look like. Um, just to kind of frame this for you, um, you know, under the current budget, uh, adopted budget, the expenditures are, uh, budgeted in the general fund, a hundred and forty-seven point-nine million, um, with revenues of a hundred and thirty-nine point-six million. And so, uh, next slide, John. Um, so, uh, the projected deficit for next fiscal years, about ten million dollars is what we're projecting at this point in time. Uh, we are still awaiting updated, um, uh, tax numbers from both property and sales tax. We're, we're pretty good at projecting those, but, um, we haven't yet gotten those in this year that then sort of solidifies. Uh, this study session in March is a little bit ahead of when we typically get to you in April, May with study sessions on the budget process, uh, but because council at the retreat asked for us to show you what further cuts would look like, um, that's, that's what we're here. And so, uh, as I've mentioned, I tasked department heads with identifying five percent and how they would cut five percent. Um, so what was identified, five percent would total seven-point-six million. So I think the critical thing, uh, to point out here is that, um, even a seven-point-six, even a five percent cut and seven-point-six million reduction in our expenditures, still leaves, uh, close to two and a half million dollar structural deficit. And in getting there, um, as I mentioned, we, we have basically cut the fat. We're to the point where, um, already, we've frozen twenty-five positions over the last two years. Uh, what you will see from each of the departments in total would be another eighteen and a half positions, and, um, very seriously, that would mean layoffs. So i- it is not eighteen and a half positions just to freeze, um, this would be, uh, thirteen and a half positions and five layoffs. So I wanna be, uh, very real and sensitive about what that means. Um, as we've already heard from some of the public comments, um, this is impacting, um, you know, people's livelihood. And so, uh, we'll now get into walking department by department, um, and identifying, you know, how each department will get there.
Before we go there, if we could go back to, um, page, oh-
She has her handwriting.
We're, we're, we're trying to figure that out.
Yeah, that, that, that's what we were working on.
We're trying to figure that out right now.
City attorney was giving her a call right now, so.
Um, but I, uh, just wanna go back to the frozen positions, and maybe I'm missing something. Um, it says, uh, chief, that we froze, um, the public information officer, but I believe we have a, a public information officer, don't we? Don't we? Come on.
We, we have frozen the actual position, um, the FTE, and we have contract services now with Jennifer, um, and it's greatly reduced. So it, we do have a PIO, but the actual position is frozen, but we had to use some of the monies to, uh, do a contract.
And how, how much is that contract?
Sixty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and mayor, if you see there, for, for the public information officer, it was frozen in one year, it's supposed to be unfrozen in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
And then, uh, just before, before-
Councilwoman Williams? Oh, I'm sorry.
Before I forget, uh, I just wanna make a clarification on a couple of changes to the presentation. When we'd come to, uh, the Parks and Rec, uh, there was an additional activity guide slide that, uh, we increased fifty thousand on savings there. So that's one slide that will be different on the presentation than what you have in your packet, just for clarification.
Okay. Um, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, mayor. Um, so, in twenty thirty, we run out of money, and that's in five years. Is part of this presentation what that looks like in five years, if we do nothing?
So if I understand the question correctly, you're saying, uh, if we do nothing, do we run out of money in tw- in twenty thirty-five?
Twenty thirty. It was on your presentation slide, twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty, yes. Yes. So there, there is still the use of one-time money, uh, that we have, assuming that we are not looking at any of what we are just seeing. Uh, we have, uh, around ten to twelve million of, uh, one-time monies, that is, besides the general fund reserves that we can also use, that will extend, in my opinion, at least twenty thirty-one.
Right, but it's best practices to not touch that money, right?
It's best practices to have a general fund reserve of twenty percent. Uh, we, as, as we, if we go without doing anything, we, at the end of twenty twenty-seven, we'll fall to seventeen percent.
Anybody else have a question on that?
So I, I do. Uh, so, when we're talking about, um, running out of money, is that with the, um, our reserve in, in place? Is that with it in place?
Correct.
At twenty percent?
Correct.
That's how we run out of money?
With, with, there is twenty percent going away. It's, it's all gone.
With it totally going away.
Everything is gone. We have fifty-six million in general fund reserves. Uh, twenty percent is around thirty, thirty-six million that we need.
Right.
So we have more than that today, but, uh, you know, with a ten million structural deficit, you can, you can have six years before you run out of that, right? So, so that's how we are saying that. There are other strategies that could extend it, like, uh, as you suggested, you could decide to run down your vehicles, you could decide not to fund other things, uh, you could, you could kick the can down the road further, uh, those are options as well.
Okay, thank you. Mayor? Uh, yes, Councilwoman?
So my question is, based on the federal environment of, um, uh, pushback, um, of funds and, you know, just shifting of funds, is, should we be considering, have we layered what could be coming, um, just this year, in, um, in federal fundings being pushed, uh, pushed back? Maybe that we don't know right now, but we, we possibly can anticipate, just being proactive? Are we looking, are we really just at the ten million deficit? Is it really a deeper deficit?
Well, that, that's a great question, right? Uh, and I should have been straight off the bat mentioning that. Whatever we presented today, and as I said, is ongoing, business as usual, no hiccups, right? Usually, you see a recession every seven years or so, you build in some kind, the, the very idea of having this twenty percent reserve and having reserves is to preserve you during times when you have bad years like that, if there is a recession. So this does not factor any kind of recession. So let's say there was a recession, uh, depending on how severe that recession was, if it takes ten million away, then instead of thirty, we go to twenty-nine or twenty-eight. So, so it all depends on how severe a recession would be.
I'm gonna add to that. So I think, uh, part of what your question, so, you know, John's right, this is, this is assuming status quo. We're, we're not planning for a recession. Who knows if one comes, right? If we could predict that, probably be in a different line of business. But in terms of, uh, federal funding freezes or reductions or changes, we are monitoring- But in terms of federal funding freezes or reductions or changes, we are monitoring that sort of across, you know, the different departments and the different areas where, where we receive those funds. We don't know yet. So there could be impacts. Most of those impacts would probably be on the transit side, on our housing authority side. Those are the, the two areas where we rely most heavily on the flow of federal funding. So any changes to that, you know, we, we don't know. We don't know what could come. You know, is there going to be a budget stalemate in, you know, on Capitol Hill? Who knows? And, you know, what other types of things might they cut? You know, to partially be funny, I haven't checked headlines in the last hour, so I don't know. But we are actively watching as best we can of, of, you know, what might be changing, like on the transit and transportation side. We, we talked with STA's lobbyist just a couple of weeks ago to try to project. And ultimately, the guidance was anything that we have been awarded, we need to get under contract ASAP because that's, that's where there's the most risk. Something that's been awarded that maybe isn't under contract, that could be at risk because, you know, if you're contractually locked in on performing with those funds, then you're in a better position to keep those monies than if you've been awarded monies and you haven't moved on them.
For example, Lopes Road, and I know that, I felt like that had some federal dollars tied to it. Is that something that could impact the budget? Because I see they're working on it. So does that mean that's money spent out and we're waiting for this money to come back and it may or may not?
That's correct. I mean, we're working with FEMA for that money, but it is not guaranteed. We haven't got a, you know, confirmation, but we hope that it will stay.
So therefore, if you spent $3 million and we don't get it, now we're $3 million even more in a deficit?
That's correct.
Got it.
And if I may clarify, those are more on the non-general fund sources, right? So, so we, we could use other gas tax money and other money by not doing other work because we did that work. Because it's not, so the focus, we tried to get the focus here today was just on the general fund. Okay, any? Yeah.
Hello again. So I represent the smallest department in the city. That's why I'm going first. So as part of our employee engagement strategy, a couple of years ago, we did a very robust survey of our employees and asked about a variety of questions. One of the things they talked to us about was, you know, needing more training, more, or more organizational development opportunities and also breaking down silos between departments. So Circle Up Education has been helping us with some of those activities. Our budget, the 5% represents about $78,000. This was one line item that can capture all of that a little bit more. Also, this, these folks are also helping us with our diversity and inclusion efforts. As you know, two of our five values in the city are diversity and inclusion. So this would obviously hamper those efforts as well. I can answer any questions you may have.
I have a question about the diversity and inclusion.
Sure.
I'm, I'm all about us making sure that we are diverse. We have a very diverse city, obviously.
Yes.
But I'm wondering if the person occupying the White House right now, if those kind of things will impact us down the road if we keep going with that?
Well, I honestly can't, can't predict.
Oh, come on now.
But what we did do actually, after the administration put out that executive order, we did work with our consulting colleagues and they made sure they went through that executive order very, very meticulously and made sure the program that we have does not violate the, the executive order. So we did do our due diligence.
That answers that. Thank you.
Sure.
Good job.
Okay, so I'm up next. My, my department is basically auditors and people, right? So I wish I could cut the auditors off, but unfortunately I can't. So the only thing I, I can do to achieve a 5%, in fact, that's a little higher than 5% is cut a position. By cutting that position, I'm going to have significant issues. I have skeleton staff and payroll, so that support is going to be even dwindled further. Payments to vendors are going to be delayed and kind of, I've concentrated on those two areas. There could be other impacts because we float people all around.
And then next up is city manager's office. So our, our target's just a little shy of 300,000. Overall, for the 5% reduction, the, sort of the largest discretionary spend that we have is on the homeless services front. So as the council remembers, you know, not too long ago, we issued a contract with Bay North for the winter shelter. That's $150,000 a year. So I would, I would propose cutting that as well as out of the marketing and outreach division, cutting one-half FTE in order to reduce expenditures across that division. I would propose, David, could you maybe reach over and just hit the next arrow for me? Reducing, or I guess eliminating our contract with Gonzalez and Son. That's our legislative advocate. As you all remember, Jason was just here last week, giving us an update. That's $46,000 a year to represent our interests in Sacramento. This, this differs a little bit about what, as I really reviewed this. The other lobbying or advocacy work we have is with California, League of California Cities. CalCities is, I want to say 33 or 36,000 per year. The main differentiation between these two, you know, advocacy efforts is CalCities is going to be focused on anything that is specific to all cities in California, whereas Gonzalez assists us in advocacy on things that may fall outside the purview of CalCities. For example, one of the things that we've worked on for the past couple of years now is trying to get a income tax for veteran population removed. California is, I believe, the only state at this point in time that still income taxes veterans' income, military veterans' incomes at 100%. And so we've been trying to advocate for getting that to match other states and either have some reduction. That is an issue that I've talked with CalCities a couple of times over. That is not something CalCities will advocate for on our behalf because it really doesn't have to do with local governance, the local government, because it's really more of a statewide income tax issue. It's a state tax issue. That's where Gonzalez assists us and that's kind of that differentiation. But having to identify cuts went here, so we would lose that ability on some of those types of things, but still have some advocacy with CalCities on more general city stuff. And then finally, council as well, you know, we have a pretty robust presence in the community, particularly as it relates to events. I think it was something, I had the number somewhere, but it was, you know, 260 or, or 240 events that were attended by council members and staff members in the CMO. 268 events last in 2024 that we tracked and 31 had tickets that were paid for by the city totaling about that $8,200. So we remove that. And then, of course, anytime we have closed session or like tonight with a, a study session, you know, we provide, you know, some, some form of food ahead of the meeting, recognizing that a lot of you work full-time, you're, you know, coming from work, coming here, potentially going to be here at a meeting late at night. We want you to, you know, be, you know, well-fed so that your mind is ready to tackle all of the important issues that we tackle here. So we would cut that out as well. And that, that total gets us to our 5% in the city manager's office. Yes, Councilmember Williams?
Mayor, can I speak?
Yes.
So just to get clarity on the mod for 89K, the elimination of the annual report, does that mean, thank you, does that mean the mailing portion or now it goes digital?
Yeah, we, we would, we would shift it to digital and get rid of the mailing portion.
And then that would reduce half a position?
No, no, I'm sorry. I, I botched that box there on this slide. So the 89,000 is the total of the elimination of the annual report, which I think this year we were able to get it out for right around or maybe just shy of 30,000. And then the remainder of that 89,000 is the half FTE.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions on that?
You want to cut our food.
What's that?
You're cutting our food.
That would be my recommendation.
We're brown bagging it, bro. Door dashing.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, good evening. As directed by the city manager, I'm presenting what it would take to effectuate a further 5% reduction in the budget and community development department and what the impacts of that reduction would be. To reach said reduction, the department would freeze two positions. The first would be a management analyst position. The definition of duties for a management analyst is professional administrative analytical and technical duties in conducting comprehensive analysis, including financial view and budgetary analysis and coordination of municipal policies, organization, procedures, finance and services to serve as a policy analyst in the department to develop, implement and administer assigned program responsibilities, including budget preparation and fiscal management and to demonstrate a full understanding of applicable policies, procedures and work methods associated with the department's scope of work. What does that mean in real terms, in practical terms for the department? It would diminish and strain our capacity to support growth, innovation and cross-departmental collaboration and the following ways are just some examples of that. The management analyst plays a vital role, not just in the biennial budget process, but also in monitoring of spending throughout the fiscal year. That operational support provides not just better fiscal management to ensure that we stay within the approved council budget, but it allows greater capacity and focus for our department leadership and division directors to do the other elements of their job, engaging with the public, partner organizations, stakeholders in both our city's present and future. The management analyst also plays a utility infielder role for the economic development team. This includes providing additional capacity for the administration of multiple economic development and quality of life efforts, such as public art and the Harter Fairfield Coordination. Additionally, the management analyst would be an important part of administering any new grant or incentive program we develop, such as the work council has directed for the North Texas Street Corridor. Because this position would help administer and monitor the performance of those programs or initiatives, that would allow our prime economic development team and others in department leadership, including myself, to focus on the broader economic development goals that council has defined as part of this year's retreat. The role, of course, on the policy development and research side, for example, currently community development and code enforcement are working on a draft for a new municipal code chapter for the council to consider that would better monitor food trucks in the city. A management analyst, by definition of their role, would be invaluable asset doing research, writing and coordination work necessary that is currently bifurcated among several, several of our team members in various departments. Those individuals have commitments to their daily responsibilities that must compete with the need for our city to evaluate our current approaches and develop new approaches, such as this code update. Put another way, the management analyst is a role that is tasked with investigating and figuring out how we get to what is, how do we get from what is today here to what ought to be or what we'd like to be as a city. And lastly, I'll say this, that the management analyst position, not just in community development, but across our organization, is an entryway or an important career step for future public service leaders. Having this position and others like it throughout the organization allows our city to develop talent internally that will ideally continue on in future leadership positions in the organization and be an example that attracts others to a career in the public sector. The second position that we would freeze is a senior planner position. The definition of duties for a senior planner is to perform a wide variety of current and long-range planning assignments with emphasis on review and processing of high priority and complex current planning applications. So practically, as an example, in the last several years and currently, our senior planners have worked on these projects and many others. The reimagining of the Solano Town Center, the Archway Recovery Center, Aurora at Green Valley, the Logista Center, Harter Fairfield Streetscape Planning alongside the Public Works Department, the annexation of what Laughco refers to as Islands within the city, the annual zoning ordinance update, which you will have the second reading of next week, the Green Valley Three Apartments, the Panatoni Industrial Buildings and the Sunset Avenue Apartments. With those examples in mind, the further impacts of not having this position on the department and the city team would include, the senior planner role is, the capacity it provides is vital for advancing long-range planning initiatives and ensuring compliance with state mandated reporting, which also, next week on your consent agenda, you will be approving this year's required state mandated reporting that the city teams put together with the assistance of our planning team. Without these senior planner positions, the implementation of key city plans and policies could be at risk, most notably looking forward, the implementation of the general plan that was adopted last year. Additionally, as I mentioned, the state reporting requirements, not just that we have to submit those things, but failure to do so can cost the city money from the state. And most importantly in that regard, in terms of our relationship with the state and the reporting requirements and planning requirements that we face, over the last several years, as you all are aware, the state of California has continued to pass new legislation that places more development regulations and mandates on cities that must be enacted or sanctions will be faced. The senior planners play a vital role of keeping us as a city on the right side of the law. The absence of a senior planner could also see, cause significant delays for major development projects, things like the villages of Fairfield, the Solano Town Center and the train station specific plan areas. Without dedicated oversight, developers may need to allocate additional resources to keep projects on schedule, potentially increasing in cost and delaying construction. These setbacks in turn could hinder the growth of the city in a variety of ways. Put another way, with the continual gathering of economic storm clouds that we've just seen this week nationally, following two days of significant declines in the markets and the impacts of tariffs and the continued unpredictability of labor, material and capital resources for investment and development, it's important for us to be able to provide a predictable and efficient development process to anyone who's making an investment in the city. And having fewer senior planner positions available to be part of that process could, would be a negative impact. And finally, the senior planner classification is the advanced journey level class in the professional planner series. That is to say that this position and specifically the two positions that we currently have in this classification allow for career progression opportunities for qualified city team members when there are openings. This is an important factor in our talent attraction and retention efforts for the organization. That concludes my presentation. Does the council have any questions?
Any questions, colleagues, on this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, one question actually.
Yes.
Geared toward the city manager. Are the austerity cuts that are being identified, is this to go to a balance to a zero deficit or to a half deficit from last one?
Everything that we're presenting tonight totals 7.6 million. We project the structural deficit at 10 million, so you would still be left with a $2.4 million deficit.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so I'm presenting an illustration for our Parks and Recreation Department. So one of the things that our department in 2021, we were tasked with producing our signature events. And so with eliminating that as a service area, we would save the city general fund about 200,000 and that's net of any sponsorship or revenue. So that would be the net savings to the general fund. That includes all of our signature events as we come to define them, which would be Brew's Blues, the two parades, Tomato and Vine. Brew's Blues, the Two Parades, Tomato and Vine, and our Christmas and Menor lighting events. And I will say that these dollars represent solely our department, so we do have, as you know, a lot of support from Public Works, police, and some with our fire department, so that's not illustrating any of their savings with the reduction of these events. And then, at your twenty-twenty-four council goal setting, we had presented that the current management agreement with our downtown theater was going to be expiring this year. Last year, we received direction from council to release in our, our request for proposals. And so, our, uh, our, um, intent is to have that contract modified similar to what we do with our golf courses, in which all the revenue is used to maintain all of the operations. So, the net result for us with changing that, um, structure of the management agreement would also be two hundred thousand dollar savings, excuse me, to our general fund. So, right now, our management contract is that we, we pay a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the, um, oper, the person to manage the facility. They retain all of the revenue that is created through ticket sales or any other rental that they have at the facility. And then the city also contributes to offset some of the utilities and, um, any repairs that are needed at the facility. So, our recommendation if, with the RFP would be to go out with that, um, restructure of the management agreement, which would save the general fund about two hundred thousand.
Any questions here? I do, I, sorry. I have a question. So, we, we paid off the bonds on the golf courses, and, um, I have advocated for years that when we got those bonds paid off, that we would ask the golf funds to reimburse the general fund for all of the money that the general fund paid into it. Is that anything that could happen right now?
We have, um, right now, we, our current, um, revenue stream has two different, um, avenues. So, we have, through our operations, obviously, that includes golf, the food and beverage, banquet services. So, those revenues, right now, we net, um, with our new operator, about four hundred thousand dollars. And then, in addition to the operations, there is an admission tax that is also collected that goes directly to the general fund, that doesn't even go into the golf fund. And collectively, between the two properties, I believe that's six hundred thousand that has contributed to the general fund right now. So, with regard to the operations portion of that, we have, um, as most of our, um, departments do, we have millions of dollars of deferred maintenance and the equipment replacement, all comes out of all of the revenue received from the golf courses, goes back into maintaining and replacement and upgrades to the facilities.
So, this year, six hundred, to be clear, six hundred thousand dollars went back into the general fund?
That comes directly to the general fund?
The general fund.
Yes.
And, um, are we, I guess I should ask John, is that included in, in everything here? And I'm still wondering about the bond repayment, how we could do that.
Yeah, correct. The, the bonds have been repaid, uh, which were taken from the golf course. So, since twenty-twenty, they've been self-sufficient, and we've been, in the past, we would give back the admission tax to the golf courses. So, since twenty-twenty, we've been taking that to the general fund.
Right.
And, uh, as far as the repayment of the bond, that's a council decision. Uh, they, they have significant deferred maintenance at the golf courses that, uh, was part of what they were discussing to use it for.
Yeah, I think it, it's something that, um, we should look at and see what maintenance we must take care of and what we can do to, um, repay the general fund to help us out here, because for years, since two thousand eight, we were pumping money into those golf courses, million dollars. I mean, it was wild. And I, I was always, um, like, what are we doing? I mean, um, you know, it was a lot. So, yeah.
Yeah, and I know, um, last year, I forget specifically when we had it, um, we had a study session where, um, Touchstone came, they, you know, provided some, you know, updated information about how operations were going ever since they took over. Uh, council made some, um, changes with the fee structure at the courses that began getting implemented, but was that?
This January.
This January. Um, at that time, the city council said not to touch, uh, golf revenue, um, to repay that in order to handle some of the deferred maintenance. Uh, but if that's, uh, if there's a shift in council's thinking and, and you all want, uh, to go in a different direction with, uh, you know, the repayment of the debt that the general fund had been giving to the golf enterprise, we're happy to entertain that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Um, the other thing I failed to mention on the downtown theater, this, um, is an illustration of changing the management agreement. There could potentially be an option to sell the facility.
So, what, uh, the theater?
Downtown theater, yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, and then, um, on this slide, one of the things that we recently implemented was a contract with Fraser Traeger to do concerts in the park, and that's about forty thousand dollars. And then, our pool capacity, basically, this would eliminate the equivalent of a full-time person, and this would be modifying, um, our hours of operation. Right now, we utilize primarily our part-time staff for this operation, and so it would be modifying the usage there, which would, uh, eliminate about a hundred thousand dollars from, um, the programming. And then, as was mentioned by John earlier, the last-minute add-on was, um, similar to the annual report. We do, uh, three times a year, we send out a hard copy activity guide to our residents, and if we went to an electronic only, that would save about fifty thousand.
Mayor?
Questions?
Couple of questions. Uh, when the city utilizes the theater, do we pay a fee for that?
We do. There is, in their contract for some of our usage, that we are required to pay for staffing. It's not necessarily a rental of the facility, but there are some costs when the city uses, utilizes that facility.
Do we own the land?
We own the building and the land, yes.
Do you have an appraisal for it by any chance?
I do not.
I'd be curious to know what that would be worth, just out of curiosity. The reason I say it is, uh, I mean, I, I think we could debate, should the city be in the business of theater? I think that'd be a worthy debate, like, and, uh, versus stuff like domestic violence. That'd be a trade-off I'd be willing to make. I'd sell the building to do domestic violence, for example. But, do we have any debt on the building? Or is it, are we, would we net all profit if we sold it?
I, I don't believe, I think it's all, it's paid for, it's our property, yeah.
I know one of the things was about like a revenue-only option, for example. I'd be curious to see what it would look like if we sold that and increased sales tax and what that, how much that could bring in to offset some of these cuts.
Yeah, and, um, I mean, any of our properties, I guess, would be con, able to be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. As the Vida Chodri Assistant City Manager, I'll be going over the IT department budget. Uh, we are one of the internal service funds, and we actually support five different funds for the city. Uh, we have a radio fund which supports the police, fire, and public works radio system. Uh, we have an IT fund that covers all of the, uh, PCs, uh, computers in the police cars, uh, computers in the fire ambulances, as well as all the laptops, printers, uh, you name the IT equipment across the organization. Uh, the third fund we have is voice-over IP, which is our phone system. Uh, we also have a public internet fund which supports our internet connections with AT&amp;T, Comcast. It also supports our website and everything related to the website. Uh, and the last, but not the least, the fund is CCTV cameras, uh, which we have about four hundred and twelve cameras across the organization. So, extension of the hard, uh, hardware replacement cycle. This one, uh, over the last couple of years, we've been extending the servers and storage from five years to seven years, because the newer equipment comes with a longer lifetime. But this year, we had to make a hard choice of extending the hardware replacement cycle for our CCTV camera system. Uh, it will have an impact to our response for the police and, uh, department, because as we extend the life cycle from six or seven years to ten years, our lenses of the cameras are going to start getting old, they collect moisture during the rain, so the visibility or the camera output may not be as sharp, uh, but that is something we're proposing that will help us achieve about two hundred thousand dollars in savings. In licensing, uh, finally, Gaianta is, uh, getting over, uh, with the two years we have been going with the ERP system, uh, so we will be able to reduce the cost on our old, uh, legacy ERP system. And the professional services, this was just evaluating what we need for our future years, and that is an area which we will be able to reduce with least impact. Operational expenses, again, looking at all five different funds, in last year, we did an extensive audit of all of our telecom circuits, which resulted in about a hundred forty thousand dollars of savings, because our, uh, previous system was over twenty years old, so we've been adding circuits over the years. As we replaced it, we audited all the circuits. Uh, and in addition to that, about a hundred thousand was from various reductions in the training for staff or other operational expenses, and that's how we are, uh, proposing to achieve our reduction of seven hundred seventy-two thousand. Our goal was six hundred eighty-eight thousand. And I'm open for any questions.
Questions, colleagues, on this one? Nope? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor, and members of public. My name is Sanjay Mishra, I'm the public works director. So, hmm, for public works, tasked to look at the austerity measure to the tune of five percent, which translates to about one point two five million dollars. Uh, this measure would, uh, impact various services offered by public works, especially landscape services, fleet management, and park maintenance services the most. A austerity measure of five percent would be around five hundred thousand dollars for landscape services, which will eliminate the tree services to the front yard, landscape strip trees. It will also reduce the tree services in the wood fencing service to residents, will eliminate the landscape maintenance, eh, along I-80 corridor. Similarly, a five percent reduction for fleet would be around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and would result in reduced number of fleet vehicles from the general fund. This will impact the core services of all other departments, and this, for two hundred fifty thousand dollars, does not reflect any other division's cuts, it is only for the fleet division. A five percent reduction or austerity measure to various park service contracts, our cuts will be to the tune of five hundred thousand dollars, which will result in closer or substantial reduction in maintenance of various park facilities. Those are, including sixteen neighborhood parks, three community parks, and this would also increase cities' liabilities and will impact the cleanliness and upkeep of, and upkeep of the, uh, various city facilities and also use, its use by residents, which will affect the quality of life. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions? Councilwoman Williams, please.
Yes, surrounding landscape services, um, will this impact, um, uh, I'm trying to say how to, figure out how to say it. Um, I'm just gonna say it. Uh, likelihood of, um, fires, that type of thing, does that impact?
Uh, no, these are mostly the, uh, trees that we have in the front yards of people. Currently, city manages and takes care of them, so, ma, you know, those would increase our liabilities and all that. We actually contract all those services up.
And, um, Councilwoman Manveer?
Been answered.
Answered, and Councilwoman Pandora?
Thank you. I just had a question around the I-80 corridor maintenance, can you talk a little bit more about what that, what that is?
The I-80 corridor maintenance currently, City of Fairfield, uh, spends, uh, about seventy thousand dollars for, uh, with Caltrans, uh, to maintain a portion of the corridor that we have an agreement with. And if we have to reduce our services, we'll work with Caltrans to not do that. Uh, City of Fairfield will not participate and will withdraw from that, uh, contract.
Yeah, on that part, could you explain that a little more? We don't really have jurisdiction on the freeway, so, curious what part of the freeway is.
It's an agreement between Caltrans and City of Fairfield that we have entered into an agreement to maintain a portion of it.
I mean, could you elaborate more on why we have that agreement even? It doesn't make sense.
Okay, so, ma, during, when actually see, a highway construction happens right next to a jurisdiction, local jurisdiction, sometimes the Caltrans works with the jurisdiction to have an agreement, and they fund a portion of that for maintenance of those landscapes. And some of those landscape agreements have been there in the, uh, for a long time, and we have been maintaining, and Caltrans have been funding a portion of that.
Can you explain what part of the, is it this like the exits, or?
Yeah, there is, I, I don't have the details, but I can get you those details if you want which location.
To follow up on that, do, how, do we get gas tax revenue to the city?
For?
Yes.
We do?
Yeah, we do for the, only for whatever has been bought in the city.
Is that worth seventy thousand?
Gas tax?
Yeah.
Far more than that.
Far more, yeah.
So, I'll, I'll give you a, a specific, I, I'm, off the top of my head, I, I don't know the ones on I-80 corridor. Uh, two years ago, um, we accepted a grant with Caltrans on, um, uh, Highway Twelve. So, there were two different intersections on Highway Twelve where Caltrans gave us money to, um, upgrade and improve the landscaping, uh, in that area. In exchange, we took over maintenance, um, of those, uh, interchanges, the, the exits and entrance onto Highway Twelve. So, I think what Sanjay's saying is, at some point in time, we have entered into some of similar form of agreement where, um, we, we did, uh, some sort of local project, Caltrans kicked in money, and in exchange, they said, okay, but you take over the maintenance of those areas.
Got it, thanks.
Yeah, and we would like our neighbors to mow our lawn, too. So, how do we do that? I mean, that's nuts, that's their property. I'm just saying. Maybe we need to talk to Lori about it. Huh? Anyway, uh, any other questions?
Yes. Is, is that a state mandate that we maintain those?
No, it's an agreement between Caltrans and City of Fairfield, it's not a mandate.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, I'm John Sturdy, the fire chief, and so tonight I'm here to talk about what five percent, uh, cuts looks like to the fire department at this point. I don't have a lot of discretionary room in my budget to cut anything but services at this point, and our, our cut is just under one point seven million dollars. So, um, the, the way we can get there is to do a rolling brown out of a fire station. So, what that would consist of is us essentially cutting an engine company each day, seven to eight months out of the year, um, and then taking that staff that we would use to fill that engine and backfill overtime positions with vacancies. In twenty-twenty-four, we averaged about, uh, five vacant positions a year through leave and, uh, injuries on duty. Um, so with the constant staffing model, we do have to fill those positions. So, we would take that staff and then use them to plug three of those positions that would be vacant on average a day. So, for equity's sake, uh, the, the plan would be that we would do these rollouts throughout the city. Each, each district would be impacted by that, um, and so we would do that based on shift work. The impacts to that would be obvious, you know, increased response times, uh, fires may go unchecked longer, uh, causing them to grow, um, putting our firefighters and our public at risk, potential out, adverse outcomes for EMS patients, increased response times, increased backup times, increased call stacking, which means a call happens in a district and there's no unit available to respond in, so another unit would have to respond into that district. Our PPP money could potentially be at risk as well, um, because of our seven-minute response time. We would have an increased reliance on our mutual aid partners, um, decreases our ability to do on-duty training, um, increased workload for our firefighters, which may increase our workers' comp costs, um, and then potential for the, the RSI rating, which we're going to be audited here this year. It may change, I don't know if it would or not. And then, a negative impact on our employee morale. That's pretty much it for me, do you have any questions?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams first, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
So, just want to make sure I understand this. So in my district, I think there are two engine companies.
Yes, you're correct.
In one building.
Correct.
So basically, they're already doing this model, right? Because there's two, two engine companies in one building.
You would go down to one during a brownout.
So one engine company will be in one building.
Correct.
And then, say, that second engine company will be floating.
No, not floating. That staff would be used to fill overtime vacancies.
Which will reduce overtime.
Overtime, yeah.
Is that where this number, 1684 is coming from?
Correct, this is a model to reduce overtime.
And what is the response time now?
In your jurisdiction, unfortunately, we have the longest response times out there. I don't know the numbers off the top of my heads because it is a very large district.
Yeah, and I wasn't specifically talking about my district. I was just relating the engine company.
We try to get there in under seven minutes, 90% of the time. It's kind of our rule of thumb.
So on average, the City of Fairfield, their response time over the whole city, because that's what I care about, is the city, the response time is seven minutes.
That's what we're required to do. On average, we're a little bit below that.
And this model changes the response time to what?
That I don't know. I would have to see what the impacts of us actually implementing this would look like.
Is there a modeling where you can, you can make that assessment?
That I would have to look into, I don't know.
I might have some more questions, I'm just processing.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Sandhu.
Hey, Chief, good to see you. Do you know off the top of your head, the total overtime cost for maybe last year, this year up till now, what it's been?
Last year, I want to say it was about $4.5 million. This year, we're trending towards $4 million.
Is that mainly driven by the vacancies?
It's driven by vacancies through normal employee benefits, vacation, sick leave, personal leave, things like that, and for our IODs.
Then one question, could you explain what the constant staffing model is?
That means for every firefighting position that we have in the city, it has to be filled with a firefighter. So currently, we have 21 firefighters on duty a day. We don't dip below that.
What would it look like if we modified that to 19?
It would, the impacts that I just kind of read off, we'd have. We cover a very large district, 100 square miles between the city and the Cordelia Fire Protection District with seven companies. That's pretty efficient. I think anything below that is going to have an impact on service level.
Got it, thank you.
Councilwoman Willi, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I know that the new fire zones just came out, or the new fire, the fire map.
The fire hazard map, yeah.
Yeah, so I know that a lot of our areas went up.
Correct, yes.
In fire risk. So how would that impact this? I know, or would our city be severely impacted with this model change, or if we would go to this model?
The one doesn't have anything to do with the other. So.
And Council, Councilman, no, then back to Councilwoman Williams, please.
Thank you. So, if I remember right, we're at 6.5 million in overtime. Did I get that right, John?
6.3.
6.3 in overtime, and your department is 4.5 million in overtime. Is that right?
No, this year, we're trending towards 4 million.
Okay. How do we get you to zero? And let me back up a little bit to say that as a business owner, I don't know how to run a business with any overtime, never mind 4.3. I just don't know how to do it. And so I don't, I don't get it. So explain it to me like I'm five. How do we get to zero overtime?
So I think in public safety in general, not just in the City of Fairfield, you can look at any jurisdiction, that's an impossibility. There will always be overtime in public safety. We can reduce it. There's models out there, there's a relief staffing model, for example, which means you would overhire firefighters to then fill in the vacancies as they pop up. But it's a trade-off. You're not paying overtime, but now you're paying for FTEs. So there's nothing really out there, and trust me, I've looked at this extensively, that would 100% reduce overtime to zero. It's.
But if those, I mean, to pay someone, overtime is what, two and a half?
Time and a half, yeah.
Time and a half. So to have those FTEs, that is still way cheaper, right, than paying someone, you know, what?
The trade-off there is with the FTEs, you're paying benefits, retirement, things like that. As to where overtime, you're just paying them the salary in overtime at that point. So it's kind of, you know, pick your poison.
Well, when I think about overtime and what that's taking the tolls of people's bodies, their minds, their family time, I'm still, it's still not adding up. The impacts on someone that has to stay double shifts and not see their kids, not see their families, and how do you function? How do you function well? So I don't, I don't know. I'm not saying I'm not buying what you're saying.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
But I'm not fully. So anyway, this wasn't a fuss, but it just irritates me when I see that overtime, and we're talking about cutting positions. And it seems like one department just needs to cut the overtime, and we don't have to talk about cutting positions in all these other departments. It just doesn't seem balanced, it doesn't seem right. And that's enough us then. Yeah, thanks.
I understand, thank you.
Yeah, anybody else? Councilman Sandhu, did you, did they answer your question?
Actually, what you were talking about, we were discussing it, and then it was, it became clear that it might be more expensive in the long run if we hired, our prayers would just go probably.
Yeah. We have modeled the relief staff model, so we've looked at it. It's definitely something that we've entertained. But again, it's a trade-off. There's an expense there as well.
There's an expense there. So say, in 2024, the average vacancy per day was five. So if you assume that average vacancy on a go-forward basis, that means you would have to have five firefighters per shift overhired. So on those five, that's, there's three shifts, that's 15 firefighters, more than what you currently have today. So you're going to hire 15 more people. Then, the minute there's an IOD, you're now having to backfill that. If there's an IOD beyond five, you're having to backfill that with overtime. So you'll overhire and still not eliminate overtime, because it's mandated, under our current agreement, that we minimum staffing be a full company for every shift, every So I would be happy, we have, I think the model when we were looking at it was, we were looking at 12, we looked at like.
12 was the max, I think 16 was the minimum.
Yeah, so we have that, I'd be happy to share that with you and go over it in detail.
I would need to see it because I, I think I need the visual piece of it versus you just kind of telling me. I need to see it, see it. Yeah.
Yeah, be happy to sit down with you on that.
Council?
Just for vocabulary's sake, is one company six people?
No, one company's three people.
One company is three people?
Correct.
And each station has how many companies?
35 and 37 have two companies right now. 35 will be split to 36 once that station gets built. So all the stations, with the exception of 37, have one company. 37 is the downtown.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mayor, Council, I'm here to present on the Police Department. I just wanted to, just a reminder, and only because it will help answer some questions later as I go through my presentation, but last year, I had to freeze nine professional staff and four police officers. And most of our department, right now, we're probably running at 60% capacity of what it should be, based on injuries and some other things. And I think they're doing an amazing job, so I'm very proud of all of them. So just going into that, starting for us, looking at what a cuts would look like, we'd have to eliminate the PAL program. Currently, obviously, this program affects our youth. It's not just an after-school program where they play basketball and do boxing, even though they get to do all of that, but it also is a place where people can go and build confidence and help their decision-making. It keeps a lot of the kids out of trouble, it gives them a place to be, rather than running around doing other things in the community that we don't want them to. And so obviously, the PAL program would have vast effects. It would affect three current full-time, or three, I'm sorry, two full-time employees would be laid off that are currently in the position, and there'd be a couple of part-time employees, to include the boxing program coaches and another rec specialist that would also be laid off in the process. Next would be our sworn staff cuts. In June, Matt Blesch is retiring, so I will backfill a captain's position, but based on the current vacancies and what we'd be looking at, if we did do this, I would also not backfill a police lieutenant, I would not backfill a police sergeant, and I would freeze an additional four police officers compared to last year where we did additional four. So how does that affect us as a whole? Obviously, it's going to put more duties on some of our management, which we can, we can handle that, but the impacts really come when we start freezing officer positions. Last year, we pretty much gutted the homeless intervention team, and we're down to two officers, so we would alleviate, or eliminate the homeless intervention team at this point. The two officers that are attached to that would go back to patrol to fill some of the vacancies that would come from a freeze. And the outreach services would be fully left to new beginnings, who we contract with now, and they would be responsible for doing all of that. Patrol would still handle calls that come in regarding the unhoused, but as far as having staff in there to deal directly with that, and I know they're doing a great job, so we would definitely get impacted on how many we get housed every year, and how many are in the Homework Bound program. So that would have a vast effect. And then our community service officer, who is also attached to that unit, would also go back to patrol. In order to find the other two officers in this four-person freeze, we'd have to remove one from the special operations team. That's essentially our gang narcotics violent offenders task force. They go out and are addressing a lot of the gang issues, they're working with code enforcement on a lot of the marijuana houses that we continue to find, and probably, to me, one of the most important jobs they do is go apprehend dangerous violent felons, the worst of the worst in Fairfield. And so that would obviously impact their abilities. They would go down from three officers and a sergeant to two officers and a sergeant. And so for obviously special events or projects, we would have to probably still hire somebody for overtime, just for them to safely operate and conduct that mission. And then traffic, we would have to remove one of our motors from traffic, which would have huge impacts. We get multiple calls and complaints, it's probably, that and code enforcement are probably the number-one complaint that we get in the city. And obviously, that would take some of the officer's abilities away from going to the schools in the morning, working directed patrols in certain areas, and so we'd have to, again, supplement that body with back-to-patrol. The homeless intervention team has a $70,000 discretionary budget, and some of that money is what we use to help with Homework Bound and different programs. That money would also be wiped. And so obviously, you guys have heard many people talk about the domestic violence program manager position already, Lilia Rowe. We roughly take about 300 domestic violence calls a year. It's probably one of the most challenging cases to stop the cycle of violence with, for a lot of different reasons. And so it's very important to have that position. We're very lucky to have that position. We have incredible advocacy with that position. And why is that important? Because that, Lilia is going to court cases, she's assisting, staying with the victims, getting them through the process, that's sometimes the hardest part, is showing up in court and following through. She's also helping get them into emergency housing. That's often, a lot of times, one of the challenges that some of the people with domestic violence or who are victims of, they can't get housing, or they rely on somebody that's abusing them, right? And so she is doing a remarkable job with all of that, and that also doesn't even include the community events that we do inside the City of Fairfield, like the pinwheel thing that we're going to be doing shortly, and the domestic violence events. We do the candle, where we light the candles in the pond to honor victims of domestic violence. Lilia is either hosting that or participating in that, and she is active in all the advocacy in this community, which is huge for us, gives us a partnership. For us to lose that would be very vital. And then we have additional frozen positions, or we would be freezing additional positions. We have a code enforcement senior that's open, we're trying to fill, we want to fill. Obviously, code enforcement, as I just mentioned, with traffic, is probably one of the most calls that we get, are issues of code enforcement. So I know we're looking to get a senior position in there, someone with some more experience to help out. Code enforcement is definitely impacted already with only four of them working. Crime prevention specialist, last year, we had to freeze a crime prevention specialist. This year would be another one. This would essentially eliminate our crime prevention program. And so we would, where does that affect? It affects Neighborhood Watch, it affects Business Watch, it affects crime-free multi-housing, it affects the 80-some events that our Police Department shows up to annually and sets up booths and talks to kids and makes an impact. And my personal opinion, us being in the community is also a huge, huge reason why we had low crime rates right now, to have that public trust, and that will be greatly impacted, not being able to be at all those events. Our communications manager is retiring in October. We would freeze that position for now, and the plan is to have a lieutenant take over that role and manage the real-time crime center and dispatch. And then there's a lot of movement going on with some other vacancies, and so we, there would be one that would just be to be determined, once we figure out what's happening. We have some internal applicants applying for different stuff, and there's different positions open right now that we would have to look at, which one of those we would end up freezing, but the average cost would be about $130,000. And then there is rent on a property and evidence building. We have to store a lot of evidence, especially from long-term homicides and cases, to include a lot of cars, and we need a lot of space. So we're looking at purchasing a building with AB-1600 funds and eliminating the $90,000 that we're paying in rent for the two buildings that we have on Woolner right now. So that will conclude what I have, if anybody has any questions.
Questions?
Okay, Councilman?
Could you tell me the total cost of how much we spend when patrol cars go home?
I don't have the exact cost on what the actual, it's about $250,000 a year extra in gas, but I don't know what the actual cost is to the vehicles as far as long-term costs with expenses of maintenance.
I'd be curious to see what it would look like if some cars stayed at the office on Seems like a reduction, a cost cut that would impact, wouldn't impact jobs, per se. I understand it would impact quality of life to a certain degree, but I'd be curious to see what that would look like in compare, in to afford ensuring we keep jobs themselves. Could you tell me how many other cities allow patrol cars to go home?
There are more and more that is starting to happen with. I know Antioch just started the program, Baccaville has some that are take-home cars as well. Baccaville has some that are take-home cars as well. So there are some that are starting to do it because it is a benefit to have that. It also is helpful during critical response. We have different elements that we need to respond quickly to the police department if necessary, or to the city. And so, that will also be impacted. I don't know how many cities have it. I think we're probably one of the pioneers for a long time ago on it. We had it back in the nineties, and then it went away, and then we brought it back again.
What percent of the fleet goes home every day?
There's about a hundred and thirty-four police cars, or cars from the city, or from the police department that go home.
Is that one, is that nearly one hundred percent of them?
All of patrol, all of the sworn officer, yes.
Got it, thank you.
Do you know how many stay in Fairfield?
We do have some in Fairfield. I don't know how many exactly.
On that line, is it just the police department that take home vehicles, or is there take-home vehicles throughout the city staff?
Yeah, there's, other departments have them as well. Public Works, Fire, I know, has some on, like, the command staff side. And I think there's a, there might be a couple in community development, but don't quote me on that. So there are others across the organization.
And I think that we talked about it briefly, that would be about, say, close to, what was it, eight hundred thousand dollars a year total? Something like that, wasn't it?
I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
But at the same time, we don't have space to store all these vehicles currently, if they didn't take them home.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Anybody, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. The PAL program, is some of those dollars underwritten by grants?
No, not any of those dollars. So some of that money, if I go back to there. So the staffing positions are not grant-funded, they're funded through our city. The PAL discretionary fund, some of that is the rent that we were paying in the building, and that's about a hundred and ninety-one thousand. So my hope was to, because it is our discretionary budget, is try to unfreeze some positions prior to this exercise with some of that money, because we had to freeze so many last year. And right now, I think John mentioned that we're essentially paying for our Axon cameras system and our tasers that are mandated, stuff that we need and is super important. It saves us a lot of money in the long run. But we're having that on the backs of frozen employees right now as well, frozen positions. So my hope was to try to use some of that money of the three hundred and twenty-five thousand. The other hundred and twenty-five thousand is for part-time staff. A lot of the events at PAL require some part-time help. When you have that many kids going a lot of different directions, we have the basketball court in the back, so we need to have referees out there that we know are cleared, that have fingerprints, that go through our background process. And then we have boxing in the second building, and then just the general PAL stuff in the first building. The actual operations, day-to-day of PAL, are run by the 501(c)(3) PAL. And so, that is all paid for. So any of the programming, some, there are some grants with food and different things. We have Kaiser Grant for food services. It's super critical with the kids. They often don't eat dinner, and a lot of them come there just to eat dinner. And so, we have grants for some of the programming through the 501(c)(3) PAL.
Got it. And of the overtime, six point three, and then minus four point three with fire, is the rest coming from the police department?
I'm sure it is. We have reduced our overtime greatly. Last year, it was three point two. It went down to about two point six with the change of schedules. We modified the schedules to, from a three-twelve to a four-ten. And so, that money was already, half a million was already removed from us. So we're working without that already. And so, we know it's going to work because we don't have it. And that's where that's kind of at. And so, again, kind of like John was saying, we can't predict what comes, right? Like, we can't predict the protests that happen every month at the base now that cost us money. We can't predict how many homicides we're going to have. We average eight or nine. So hopefully, we don't get to that point where we're spending all that money. But we have to be ready for it because we just don't know what could come. And so, there's a lot of unknowns in public safety. And so, unfortunately, a lot of those things cost money based on contracts and MOUs and such.
So, so your overtime budget is just to sit there, just in case there are variables, protests, homicides, that people have to work all around the clock until, until the investigation is done?
Correct. And it gets spent, too. Like, we have to backfill patrol, if we have to send somebody somewhere. Some of that money will get back if it's a mobile field force deployment, but sometimes we don't. And so, things like, Christina brought up some of the special events, we spent about a hundred thousand last year in some of that stuff because, obviously, there's issues in Israel right now and Hamas. We're still dealing with all of that. So you may have only seen or saw three or four police officers out there, but we had our whole mobile field force team out ready to go at the menorah lighting. We have to staff the Christmas tree lighting. And today is, today's world, obviously, we saw what happened in Louisiana, right? The barriers don't go up, and, or the barriers were up and a lot of people died. So we have to prepare in advance for that, and it does cost money. The parades cost us a lot of money. We usually have about forty staff members that deploy for those, just to ensure that everything is secure out on Texas Street.
So that actually was, you just fed into my next question. So, I agree. I've gone to events, and I feel police presence, even though I don't quite see it, I just feel a presence there. So if there was a rollback into some events, would you be able to, is there a model or where we could see numbers that if we, if we pulled back on a, I can't even just roll, it's just too late at night for me to just make up things, but just say it's a fair. So, could we say, could Park and Rec kind of put all the numbers together? But could we have it a little broken down, where we're like, no, we're not pulling back on everything, but maybe instead of, say, twenty-five events, we're going to have twenty? Would we be able to see what that rollback on just a few events, how that would pull back on the budget in both departments?
We could show what stuff is costing us. Susanna does an amazing job with tracking our overtime. And so, we have a rough idea on what some of those things are, but then there's impacts, like, we just don't know. Like, we had SWAT warrants. We've had four, I think, in the last month and a half, and they're not even for us, they're for other cities. But that's part of that mutual aid agreement to help out. And things like that cost money because we want to be safe, right? We want everybody to go home, including the person we're trying to get. And so, things like that do cost money, and they're just so unpredictable. We just don't know exactly what that's going to cost or when those are going to happen. But to your question, yes, there are events we can show you, like, hey, this parade costs forty thousand dollars, this parade costs thirty thousand. And we can show you some of that type of stuff. So would it help? Yes, it'll help reduce the amount of overtime. My fear of just saying, take that out of my budget, is there's been rough years that we've had, and we just don't know what's ahead sometimes. So we just have to be ready and willing to use it. And that money goes back, it's not like we keep it the next year, so.
Thank you.
If it's over.
Any other questions of the chief?
All right, thank you.
You're free to go.
So that takes us through all the departments. The last slide here is really just, without the numbers, just an overview. These are all of the impacts that five percent would have on the organization and on the community. So, you know, at this time, I want to give this council credit. Over the last couple of years, you have already made some hard decisions. And I want to give, you know, most of the folks here in the audience tonight are employees, I want to give them a lot of credit as well. Because despite the reductions that we've already made, I think this organization has done a fantastic job of rising to the occasion and meeting the vision that this council has set. You all have set a very clear vision of wanting to really elevate, lift Fairfield into a destination, into a city where, you know, some of the prior reputation that Fairfield may have had goes away. And an organization, I'm sorry, you know, making Fairfield, and this is the vision, for making Fairfield a vibrant, safe, clean, affordable, and diverse community with robust commerce. And so, as your city manager, as the one that has dove in as close as possible with all the department heads and looked through all of this stuff, and understanding where, in my conversations with you all, both individually and collectively, where it is you see us going as an organization, where you see us going as a community, it's my recommendation that you don't do this. This is sort of counter to that vision. In this last year, or I'm sorry, in a couple months ago, at your last council retreat, the council identified very clearly economic development as one of your highest priorities. I was very glad to hear that because I think that ultimately, long-term, growing the pie, growing our way out of long-term structural issues is the way to go. But if we start making reductions like this, it does not accelerate our ability to attract businesses and help businesses grow and thrive in Fairfield from an economic development lens. It is pretty tough to go to a business and say, we want to bring you to Fairfield, never mind that we're browning out stations, or we're reducing our police force, we're reducing maintenance in our parks, and all of the quality-of-life things that companies do look at when they go to site-locate. So I view this and these types of reductions as counterintuitive to where this council has identified where you want to go. At the council retreat, we also, and on the slides earlier, right, it was hybrid. We've gone about as far as I think we can go on the hybrid approach. You all asked to show you what austerity looked like. This is a realistic look of what five percent cuts across the board would look like. There is still one other option on the revenue front, and I would recommend we start having more serious conversations on that front. But at the end of the day, ultimately, council, you are the ones that set the budget, you're the ones that make the financial decisions, and we will go in any direction you want to go. With that, happy to take any further questions you might have, or, you know, turn it over to council for conversation.
Yes, Councilwoman. David, I just want you to repeat that last few lines. You said, I recommend go that front, and I missed what front?
Look at revenue. Look at revenue, yeah, sales tax.
Yeah, Councilwoman.
So have you done those numbers, David? The maximum that we could go to would be nine and a quarter. The average, talking sales tax now, the average sales tax in Solano County is just, just under nine percent. Vallejo's at nine and a quarter, Benicia's at nine and five eighths, nine point six two five. Rio and Sussun are both at nine and an eighth. Have you done any of, you're about to show me some numbers, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah. We put, we put a slide together, just in case you had the question, or anybody on council had this question. John's going to it now. The, overall, I ran a very quick analysis, you know, over this past weekend. We are at eight point three seven five across the state of California, all jurisdictions, all cities, the average. And that is posted on California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, CDTFA's website as of January one. Obviously, they don't yet have the, as of April one, when some of our neighbors like Sussun City, or Rio Vista, or Benicia, that goes into effect. As of January one, statewide, the average was about eight point seven five, sales tax rate in the state of California. Now, anecdotally, I would say that you find higher sales tax rate in higher-cost areas, lower sales tax rate in more rural, lower-cost areas of the state. But we are about point four percent below the state average. This chart is just in Solano County. So as of, again, as of April first, when some of these other jurisdictions that, sales tax that they passed back in November goes into effect, these are all of them across the county. The Solano County cap last year, Assemblymember Wilson, at the request of Benicia, this city council supported the effort to raise the maximum in Solano County. So right now, the maximum in Solano County would be up to nine point seven five percent. And I think we have, any city, if they were going to choose to pursue, measure has until, I believe it's twenty twenty-eight or twenty twenty-nine, in order to take that to the voters. After that period of time, it reverts back to whatever the state maximum is, which is, I think, nine and a quarter.
And do you have some numbers on what, seven eighths of a bump, or whatever a bump would, do you have some numbers on what? What is Measure P now?
Yeah.
Measure P is at one percent.
So Measure P is around twenty-four to twenty-five million a year.
How much?
Twenty-four to twenty-five million, at one percent.
So it's seven eighths, which is a little less than one percent, it would be a little less than...
Eighteen, seventeen, eighteen.
I just wanted to throw, I mean, I'm just doing all the numbers here, and, you know, the staff is, we're cut to the bone. I think that the, if we do, if we agree with something like this, it's going to take everybody. But that's, I think that is an option that we haven't tried yet, it's an option that's on the table, it's an option that other cities across the, not only our county, but probably across the state have done. So I'd just see what the flavor of the council is on that. But I'm with Mr. Gassaway, and, you know, the staff has put in the hard work, they've put in the cuts. So I'll leave it up to council.
Councilman Doug?
Yeah, and I agree a little bit, well, a lot with that. Our staff are cut to the bone, and one of the things that is going to increase our value is our staff, is our people, is our safety, is our police department, is our fire department. This has to be a destination, a place for us to come. And if it costs a couple of points per the dollar to do that, to save that, I can't see that that doesn't make the most sense to me. The second thing is, is a little more innovative in our, in our outlook on other revenue possibilities, such as, you know, there's, I was at a meeting earlier today that was very exciting about Solano County and the possibilities of what can happen here due to our, where we are in the state, and what we have as, not just a city, but as a county. And I think that if we start focusing a little out of the box, maybe bring the tax up a little bit, I think we don't have to risk any of this at all. And without that much pain to average Joe taxpayer. I think that's something that, like, I think it makes the most sense to me as well.
Can I just add a little bit more, Ken?
Sure.
Just for context, I know a lot of people say, you know, you're not like Walnut Creek, you're not like, we don't pay the taxes they pay either. Antioch's nine point seven five, Concord's nine point seven five, El Cerrito's ten point two five, Martinez is nine point seven five, Pinole is ten point two five. So it's just, the way that I'm looking at it, and granted, I work with numbers all day every day, but a nine point two five or an increase in the rate to stop or certainly limit all of this, I don't think is, is out of the question. And I think, I think I've said enough.
Councilman, see, I do.
To the city manager, could you walk us through the process of, what would be the process to do a sales tax increase?
I mean, simplistically put, council basically does a resolution to place it on a future ballot. And the options are, you know, there's a primary vote, which next year, I believe, is in June, I don't know the exact date. And then, and then you have a November general election.
So the earliest we could put it on the ballot would be June twenty-six?
Yeah, that would be the recommendation. You can do, you can do a special...
It's June second, I think.
I'm in twenty twenty, the year of twenty twenty-six, June twenty twenty-six.
So you can do a special election where, you know, you... So, you can do a special election where, you know, you, basically, just the city of Fairfield's putting out a ballot for, you know, some form of tax measure, but then we bear the full cost. Whenever it's either the primary or the general election, the county registrar is already putting out ballots, and you're just paying to add to that. So, you know, there's economies of scale, and everybody, you know, having the ballots at the same time.
And is it a 50-plus-one, or like 55% threshold, or?
Those would be, you know, if council wanted us to bring a discussion on that, what I would suggest is that we come back with, you know, like a staff report and more specific details on that, because there would be options before you. So, if it's a special tax for a special purpose, so let's say you wanted to just do just a sales tax for only road maintenance, then that requires a 2/3 voter approval. If it's a general tax for any general purpose, then it's a 50-plus-one.
General. I think, I'd like to see it on a future agenda to consider it, not from my end.
Thank you. I mean, I think absolutely this austerity situation is counterintuitive to what we talked about in our, at our council retreat. We talked about public safety and creating a place where everyone, people feel safe, and there's things to do, and this does not align with that at all. And I think if we do go with a sales tax, that we do need to be a united front, absolutely, like, not just, not just us, not just council, but like, staff and employees, like, we need everyone to be a united front. Susun went through it last year, you know, or this last election, Benicia, and they all worked together. And I think if we go that route, we all have to work together. That's period, because our city, obviously, we're like, you know, we've said, we're down to the bone, and yeah, we are, and it's not, it doesn't feel good talking about this stuff today, these are hard conversations to have, and I know every department had to go through some really hard, like, exercises to cut down even more after we've already asked for more previously. So, I would be open to also, as well, looking at what that would look like going forward with the sales tax.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Doug?
And just to...
You already talked, wait a minute. Councilwoman Williams, hot air there. Go ahead, bro.
I can call up the car.
Okay, go ahead, car.
Knowing all of this, I've just been doing a little survey myself, you know, because I see a lot of people in a day and ask them, "What rather you have, a little increase in your dollar, or a loss of a fire station and some police protection?" And the answer's always been, "I don't mind paying a little more to have what I already have." And that's just the last week of people I've been talking to. So, just putting it out there, and like Doree said, it would take all of us, every employee. I mean, we're all, we would all have to be on the right page with this for it to go smooth.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that this, it's always a good exercise to go through and comb through budgets, because we'll see contracts that we shouldn't have, or something we're spending too much on, or something that just doesn't make sense. So, I love that we went through this exercise, I love that we went through it two years ago, and the departments rose to the occasion and really combed through and saw what to, what to cut. It made sense. Then this exercise, although uncomfortable to hear, was, it made sense for us to all go through it, and I'm so glad we did it here, on camera, so the community can be here and be on camera and watch it later, to really understand that we are going through a budget deficit. What we've done in the last few years, what we have all done in the last few years, and what we need to do today. I don't like having these type of meetings, that study sessions, that's, you know, that's not recorded and all that, so people can educate themselves later. So, I appreciate all that. I do not want to see positions cut. We froze some positions two years ago, and I remember, and I do tours, so I went on a tour with HIT. I don't see them now. And you could see that that really made it difficult for them to do their jobs, code enforcement. You can tell, it makes it harder for the whole department to do what they need to do, and I see examples of that all over. So, to go even further back and cut positions, I absolutely do not think it's the right thing to do. But there are some things that are in some of these PowerPoints for these departments that's like, huh, I wonder if we can cut a little more here or there. So, there are some of those things that give me, you know, just things to think about, and I have made way too marks, too many marks on these PowerPoints to figure out what that is today. But I still think, you know, it's just a good business, good government business for the people, for us to always be combing through budgets and say, you know, "We've just been spending, you know, $200,000 a year on this, does that really make good sense for us today?" I don't see anything wrong with that. But to today, I absolutely believe that we need to look at sales taxes as a revenue source, to learn more, as all of us, as a community, to learn more, because you're right, to lift this thing, we need to know that the community is behind it for it to pass or not. We do have to do something, we're out of money in 2030. Jeez, time goes so fast.
And are they all behind this? I mean, it's gonna...
He's just, he whispers to me all the time. So, in five years, that happens, that will happen in no time, and what I do know is that we have to do something. So, to me, the sales tax revenue is the something that we need to look at. I know we can't do nothing, that I know, and I'm looking forward to learning, to learning more about it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be the devil's advocate here. I, first of all, I've been here since 2008. I was here through a really, really bad time, and I have never, in all my time, ever, ever, voted to lay a person off. I was the only person who stood up for the police. They don't stand up for me all the time, but I've stood up for them. Same thing with fire. Nobody, I never, ever did. I will say, though, when I'm looking at these things, just like Councilwoman Williams, that I see some more fat to cut. Is it enough to get where we need to go? No. But my question is over here to the finance manager. So, let's say we pass a top of Measure P, which is a 1%, and I'm the only one here that worked on that. Oh, did you?
I was the chair.
No, you weren't.
For one meeting until you were talking.
You weren't, because the subcommittee was me and John. Anyway, as far as elected officials, and yes, God did help at the time. Okay, so we have that, that extra, one cent, and so, we go, let's say, let's just call it another one cent. Where's that going to take us to until we need to come back and get another tax raise? I mean, really, because we're going to have inflation. We know that it's going to cost us more to pay people. That's the way it goes. So, when are we going to stop asking for more taxes? That's my question.
I think getting in better fiscal discipline is really important. And as I pointed out in my earlier slides, in between 2020 and 2022, you added 54 positions. That is a lot of positions.
Yeah, I, yeah, it is, it's a lot of positions.
So, you know, we can take it in any direction, right? It is how we manage our budgets. We have been pretty, we've been doing pretty well over the last two years in cutting the fat, in controlling expenditures, in questioning expenditures. My hope would be that we continue, as an organization, to be physically more responsible and controlling costs.
Yeah. And then, of course, we would want to do what we all agreed to do, and that was increase economic development, and take it very, you know, seriously. I mean, I want to see some companies that earn jobs, and I ain't kidding, so we better figure it out, one way or another, and I want homelessness to go down, and I don't want to be spending that kind of money if we're not getting some action. So, I see things, and if I were, and I'm not, there are seven of us, but I would make some pretty tough cuts tonight, myself. And I will say that I would not cut any police, I would not cut any fire, and I would not cut the domestic violence advocate, ever. When I was 17, I was raped brutally, and I know, taking a big breath there, Scott, hold on, so you can hear this. I didn't have an advocate. My person wasn't charged. I never got any help. My mom tried to get the DA to charge, nah. So, and that is a position that helps both men and women, but mostly women. And as a woman leader, I would never cut that position, ever. Maybe others would, it sounds like they don't want to, so, you know, I'm happy to hear that this council does want, has given direction, from what I've seen, to go ahead and bring us back a look at sales tax measures, and I think that's our direction, that's what everybody's said.
Madam Mayor?
Except for me, what?
Do you want to take a public comment?
Yes.
Do you want to open it for public comment?
Oh, sure. I'll open it for public comment, if anybody wants to talk.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Well, that was quite the presentation. I'm Carol Haddock, most of you all know me, and really, very informative, thank you very much. Also, I did look at all the other taxes, sales taxes, in every city in California, and I see there's room for making a move, and I think that the mayor asked the perfect question, is how much will, you know, 3/4% or 1% get you, and how long will that be good until you see a forecast where the revenues are not sufficient to get? So, I think that's an excellent question.
It is.
The other thing, and I think you definitely have my support, and you definitely had a bunch of advisory board people here who supported as well, and if you look at a 1% or even a point, you know, 7, 8% tax increase, off $1,000 of discretionary income, because you don't pay it off your total income, you only pay it off what you're paying for paper towels, and, you know, maybe an automobile will be the high end, but you don't buy that very often.
Right.
So, how many people are spending $3,000 a year that are taxable, or $5,000? That's probably about the average number, if you're not buying a car, and the people who are paying this are really the builders, and people do big lumber, big, big building. So, if I spend $3,000, and if it's the 1%, that is $10 off of $1,000, so, there you go. There's, it's really not that much for the average citizen, and certainly, the police are worth it, the fire department's worth it, the Fourth of July Parade is worth it. And I think if you look at it that way, I think you will get the support of the people, and I think you'll have to go out and campaign like you did for Prop P, and didn't that win twice, didn't that come back again and get renewed, or something like that? So, good job, and I'll, all around, and that's it.
Thank you. I also failed to tell the colleagues that there will be a probably 1% sales tax on top of this, that the MTC has put into place to run at the same time. So, they're going to be competing, and also realize that one, two, three of us are up for reelection, and we, so, as far as going out and campaigning for yourself, you'll be cutting into that with this, and I know that because I did it before, and just things that I want you to think about. So, that'll be, if we did a 1% or, you know, 3/4, 1.75, you know, and also understand that sales taxes hit poor people the worst. They're not good for people who are on tough budgets, so I want us to think about that, too. So, we've got direction. Anybody else want to speak?
Do I need to fill out a card?
You, just come up and speak, and you can fill out a card.
Okay, this is the first city council meeting I've ever been to, so thank you, and I wanted to say thanks to the Daily Republic for putting this in the paper, because I'm one of those dinosaurs that still get a paper, and here's the article, I'm like, "I should go to this." So, so, I just, a few things I wanted to say, or as suggestions, I'm not a big fan of increasing taxes, because, you know, it affects a lot of people. I'm all for selling some city property we don't need, I thought that was a very good idea. I'm all about bringing businesses here and getting people to patronize these businesses. I have so many friends in town that they go to Vacaville for this, and Benicia for that, I'm like, "Why aren't you patronizing businesses here?" And my, the main thing I wanted to do while I was here, is what prompted my attention, was the fact that there's, they're going to cut out my concerts. And so, the thing is with the concerts, if they're downtown at the county, at the county green, it pulls people into these businesses, and I think we need to do more. It bounced around last year to different places, and I think if it stays at the county green, that's what draws people downtown and gets them to, you know, patronize these businesses, which will bring more sales revenue, which I'm all about bringing more revenue in, and somehow encouraging folks to spend money in town here, so that we have the tax dollars that way, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your support, because you like the concerts. They are, they are great.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's one thing Fairfield, I think, needs more of, is those kinds of things, community things that bring people in, and something to get the people that are coming here wine tasting, to come downtown to the businesses and spend money in town.
You bet. Thank you so much. Anybody else? Well, oh, come on up. We could take the mic, a mic to him? Is there a cordless over there?
This is purely a curiosity thing on my part. I'd like to hear a lot more about this, 84 million on electrification is. That's it.
That's it, huh?
Yep. You know, the taxpayers will oppose you no matter what, but I can't speak for them individually.
Well, we could tell by your button, we know who you are, and I love you.
Okay.
I'm going to join you when I retire.
What is that 84 million in electrification going for?
Electric vehicles.
You're buying vehicles, you're putting in charging stations, or what?
We got to do all of the above. All of our police cars will someday be electric. What do you think about that? Oops, sorry, I ran out of a charge, sir. Couldn't get them.
Did you happen to hear our State of the Union message that was not a State of the Union message the other night?
I didn't listen, no.
You didn't hear it?
I didn't hear.
Okay, well, one of the things that came out, it was drill, baby, drill.
Okay, we'll do that, too, you got an oil well in your backyard.
Just a comment.
Thank you, Cornelius. I appreciate everybody being here, and I appreciate staff and the time it took to do this. I know they did it just to scare us, to make us raise taxes on you, so, yeah. So, I appreciate you, and appreciate all staff and all of our citizens here, and all of you who are worried about your jobs being cut. you who are worried about your jobs being cut. I think you can walk away now, know that that doesn't look like it's going to happen at all, so we just got to keep Fairfield moving forward, and I say this again, it's because of all of you, including the citizens who are at home, watching and not watching, and sleepy and or working, who work with our police department, our fire department, our domestic violence people, that we have an extremely low. Our crime has plummeted in this city because of all of that, and we want to keep that going. That's one of the reasons that we asked tonight to bring this back. We need to keep moving that way. It's something that when I became mayor, and these folks became this council, this council's, I always say, the get-or-done council, so there we go. Have a good evening.
May I still need direction?
Oh, we already gave it to you.
For the budget preparation.
We're good. Thank you. Thanks, John. Can you, can you help him with that some more? Okay, thank you.